I'd like to call the June 22 board meeting of the Francis Marion Board of Trustees to order. I'd like to welcome you all here and we'll call the roll now.
Mr. Bryson?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Dr. Gage?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Elmore?
Here.
Mr. Newman?
Here.
Mr. Gollum?
Here.
Mr. Satchel?
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. John?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Letherman?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. McHale?
Here.
Mr. McHale?
Here.
Mr. McHale?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Dr. R. Kelly?
Okay, I think we have a four. The press has been notified of the meeting for the Freedom of Information Act. We will now have the approval of the minutes from the March 2 meeting. Is anyone?
Summons.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Ayes, nays, motion is approved. We'll move on to committee reports. Our first item is the Executive Affairs Committee meeting. We met this morning, discussed a number of items. There was no action taken. The Academic Affairs and Accreditation Committee. Trustee Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met this afternoon. I had a great meeting. First, we heard from the faculty chairman, Dr. Becky Flanagan. She informed us that there are 15 new faculty members and counting for next year so far, as well as a number of additional leadership changes. Of particular note, we wanted to recognize that Glenn Gurley would be beginning his term as the new faculty chair in July, and thank Dr. Flanagan for her service as chair. She's moving on to serve as chair of the English, Modern Languages and Philosophy Department. Enrollment Management, Dr. Ward has reported. They've had three of eight orientations. They've been very well attended. We've also got a pilot program. Twelve students are attending Swamp Fox Seminar. It's allowing students who might not be able to enroll under normal requirements with the opportunity to prove and develop themselves through a successful completion of a course involving math, logic, and college skills. Those who are successful in the program would then be eligible for admission. As of May, there were 379 graduates at May graduation. That makes 699 for the year, and after August, we should top 700 graduates for the year. And freshman enrollments are on target to meet or exceed last year's enrollments. So that's all good news. Positive reports from liberal arts, education, business, and health sciences. Of particular note, the Department of Health Sciences received a $1.8 million grant this week. It allows need-based students in the program to receive stipends, plus mentoring and tutoring support for four years. So that's a really significant grant and great news from the Health Sciences Department. We'd also like to express gratitude to Dr. Shirley Bosmith, the Dean of Education. She's stepping down. She's retiring, and welcome Tracy Meets Holcomb as our new Dean of Education. And finally, the German track is being discontinued. Right now, there's currently only one major, so they're going to teach that out, and there won't be any staff cuts. They're just going to reallocate those resources to the other languages. And one other note, we had a very heartfelt note of thanks from Lynn Kostov, and I wanted to read that real quickly to the board. It's addressed to the Board of Trustees from Lynn Kostov. It reads, "I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for your support of Francis Marion University and your support in particular of the faculty and of so many of President Carter's initiatives during his tenure here at FMU. That support meant a lot to me, especially over the last 10 to 12 years of my career. It was professionally and personally satisfying to close out my 32 years at FMU, knowing that the board trusted and respected the faculty's efforts to fulfill the school's mission. I tried to take that trust and respect into the classroom each day and to make the most of both when I turned my writing, turned to my writing and research projects. Once again, thank you and best wishes to President Carter and you for the future of Francis Marion. Yours truly, Lynn Kostov, Professor of English, Sparrow Writer in Residence and Trustee Research Fellow." And that concludes the report of the Academic Affairs and Accreditation Committee. Mr. Chairman?
Good, thank you. Anyone have any questions? Good report. Development and Alumni, trustee Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met this morning, and we heard from Darryl Bridges, Vice President for Development, and Julian Young, Director of Alumni Affairs. There was a scholarship reception and golf tournament over the last, since we last met. Both were very successful on the community and outreach activities. The local government initiative that we began last year is going to continue. We'll have 30 to 45 participants, and for the 16th year, the Nonprofit Leadership Center is also going forward. The Arts International Festival was a huge success again downtown, and we have a new director joining us at the PAC in mid-July, Bud Simmons, who is the former Operations Director of the Charlotte Symphony, where he was in charge of looking at, among other things, their pop series. And so we're looking forward to good things from Bud. From the Educational Foundation, family and friends of alumni, Brian Kelly established a scholarship in his honor. Scholarship was also established in honor of Dr. David Peterson, who served the university for approximately 40 years. City of Bennettsville has established a scholarship. Other towns within the PD are also looking at establishing scholarships. We see, received a scholarship from MacLeod Health Systems for about $75,000 to assist with the Health Science Program, and from Duke Energy of about $50,000 to assist with teacher education. And we also received a, some funding from Wells Fargo, and we certainly appreciate them returning to support the university. There were eight new board members elected on the Alumni Board. We have our first out-of-state board member from Tennessee, Dr. Tim Hunter from Newberry was elected president, Tim Hill from Lexington is vice president, Natasha Bradley from Aiken is secretary. On June the 6th, the Alumni Association held a reception in Greenville at the Commerce Club. I was there, along with former trustee member Brad Bowles, who many of you may recall. It was good seeing Brad. We had a good turnout. The next receptions are scheduled July in Aiken and the Augusta area, and then after the fall term begins in Myrtle Beach and Charleston. We're currently in the middle of an annual fund appeal, both email and direct mail for an alumni recruitment. The Young Alumni Council just had their elections recently, and they'll be working with the Student Alumni Association in the fall. I would like to mention one other thing about the foundation. It received an unmodified audit opinion letter from accounting, independent accounting firm based on its audit, and 90% of the funds of the foundation go to support foundation programs, and only 10% go towards internal administrative expenses. That's highly, highly commendable. You don't hear that very often. So great work to the foundation. That concludes my report, unless there's some questions.
All right. Thank you. Next report is Financial Affairs and Facilities. Trustee Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. The Financial Affairs and Facilities Committee met this afternoon. All committee members were present. We were joined by Vice President of Business Affairs, Jay Kispert, several members of his staff, Thomas Welch, Eric Garrison, Paul McDonald. Appreciate them joining us today. You've all had a bunch of material sent to you. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to pull that out and review it. You should also have a copy of it in front of you today, and I'll go over that with you now. This is, since our board meeting, this covers our financial standing through March of this year. We basically have got one week left to go in our fiscal year, which will conclude next Friday on June the 30th. Spring revenues finalized at 97.2% of our target budget expectations. Late spring revenue came in $31,000 short of our $210,000 revenue expectation. At the time of this report, it appears that summer one revenues will meet their revenue target. Overall, we can expect that by year end, we will have met well over 99% of our anticipated revenues for the year. Expenses, as of the report date, our general funds were 89% expended, which is in line with the expected percentage expenditures as of the reporting date, which would be 92%. There was no change in headcount or FTE since our November meeting. Our total employee headcount sits at 498, and FTE sit at 442. Four-year change is 11 on headcount and 10.6 on FTE. Probably change in our March report is due to the addition of three employees primarily to the facilities and the campus police staff group. Since March, financial aid has made a final estimate of aid at $52,622,274 for the current year. The most significant addition to financial aid this year was the receipt of federal funds for scholarship grant awards for our nursing programs, which equaled roughly $500,000 this fiscal year. Trends for next year has financial aid increasing to $54.3 million, primarily due to a combination of grants, scholarships, and loans estimated by the Office of Financial Aid. We also want to present for your consideration a resolution, which you've also had, Resolution 03-17, is the university budget approval for the fiscal year 2017-2018. I'll briefly go over a few notes in that budget for your consideration. The resolution seeks to establish fiscal year 2017-18 general operating budget for the university. New revenue and expenses, $418,218 in base operating appropriations were received. This budget also includes a 3% increase in tuition and fees, and will generate an additional The increase is primarily due to the increase in employer fringe cost, program startup costs associated with the speech pathology program, and further expansion of our physician assistant program. That equates to an increase per semester of $149 for our resident undergraduate students. We currently estimate that the state will cover approximately $415,981 of the cost of the state retirement fringe income of $640,000. The cost increase is related to state retirement reform. You'll remember from earlier in the year, that will increase employer fringe cost by approximately 2% effective July the 1st, 2017. Employee retirement cost will increase by 3/10ths to five, up to a half of 1%, depending on, in the retirement system an employee is enrolled in. Looking to the future, we'll see employer retirement fringe rates continue to increase by about 1% annually until 2014. Also, as an added note, you may have picked up on it at our lunch meeting today, this budget does, does hold within it an increase of 1 and 1/2% for all of our employees. I think that was not the case for most other universities throughout the state, or was not mandated by the legislature, so we were glad to be able to accomplish that in this budget. So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to present to you, we voted on this in our committee, Resolution 0317 was unanimously approved, and we would like to present it to the full board for their approval.
There is a motion on the table to approve Resolution 0317. Is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion or any questions? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Ayes, nays, motions approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up for consideration is Resolution 04-17. That's the procurement card authorization increase. I won't read the resolution, but I'll just touch on a couple of highlights. The resolution seeks authorization from the university's board to increase transaction limits for procurement cards for key university personnel. The resolution seeks to increase the limit per transaction from $2,500 to $10,000 for the university's purchasing staff and travel coordinator. No other employee cards will be affected. This change will significantly shorten the amount of time for these employees to execute purchases between $2,500 and $10,000. The change requires board or trustee approval per the South Carolina High Education Efficiency and Administrative Policies Act of 2011. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, also, we voted on that unanimously approved by our committee, and so we would present Resolution 04-17 to the full board for their approval.
Motion is on the table. Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, sorry. I'd like to abstain from the vote on Resolution 4-17, due to my service as the Chief Administrative Officer of the Control and General's Office, which is the co-administrator of the State Healthcare Research Program.
Senator. Thank you, trustee Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next on our agenda, you have it in front of you, Resolution 05-17, adoption of the Campus Development Master Plan. You've had that, hopefully you've had an opportunity to look at it. I'm not going to get into great detail on this document. I believe President Carter is going to address that in his remarks. I do want to give thanks to those that I mentioned earlier, Jay Kispert, Thomas Welch, and Eric Garrison, those that spent a lot of time and hours putting this fabulous document. I would encourage you to look at it and get familiar with it, but thank them for their work on this document. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I present Resolution 05-17, also unanimously approved by our committee, to the full board for their consideration.
Motion is on the table, second?
Second.
The discussion, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ayes, nays?
If there are no further questions or comments, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Good, thank you very much. Student Affairs and Athletics, trustee Bryson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Student Affairs and Athletics Committee met earlier today. We heard outstanding reports from our VP of Student Affairs, Teresa Ramey, our Director of Athletics, Murray Hartsler, and our SGA President, Frederica Presley. Related to student affairs, a few highlights, March 27th through the 31st, student affairs participated in Gender Week, which included such outstanding events as a Men of Character Panel Discussion and a Women of Strength Event. The Annual Student Leadership Conference was successful once again with 63 students in attendance. The University Programming Board sponsored three alcohol education events this spring semester for the student body, a mocktail party, an alcohol awareness panel, and a DUI simulator event, and want to thank campus police for their support of all three of those activities. Moving into Student Life Awards, 10 students received the prestigious Pride of the Patriot Award this year, including our very own SGA President, Frederica Presley. Shout out to her. And then our senior nursing student, Rose Williams, received the Leadership Legacy Award. So congratulations to these students and their fine achievements. In terms of the Student Government Association's had a very, very successful school year. The offering of the color printing to student organizations has been a tremendous success this year, with over 40 different student organizations utilizing that color printing service. During the final exam period, SGA partnered with the library to provide refreshments and exam tips to students in the library studying during those extended hours, and the freshmen in particular appreciated the exam study tips. During spring break, Student Government took 16 students to Washington DC for an outstanding educational leadership tour, which included visits with staff members from several, several of the South Carolina congressional offices, a tour of the Capitol Building, visits to several monuments, including the African-American History and Culture Museum, and a performance at the Kennedy Performing Arts Center. So, elections for the fall upcoming new school year were held in late March, and suffice it to say, the ladies swept the executive office elections with all four positions, President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer being duly filled. Also, this upperclassman senate elections were, that quota was met at 20, and then there'll be five freshman senate seats up for election in the fall. So we'll look forward to working with our new Student Government Executive Office in the fall. Finally, in April, the Student Government Association cosponsored the Student Leadership Conference. It was very successful, and, and we just want to thank our, our President of SGA, Frederica Presley, for an outstanding year. Moving into athletics, spring semester GPA is in, and Murray noted that at 2.88, that was higher than the student body average. Also, 92 of our student athletes, roughly 50%, finished spring semester with above a 3.0 average, and 15 had a perfect 4.0. So that's outstanding. We had 13 new students named to the National Collegiate Athletic Society, Chi Alpha Sigma, and that requires five semesters of a 3.4 GPA or higher, and they're screened as well by, by committee for, prior to receiving that honor. Women's tennis made their, once again, made an appearance in the NCAA National Tournament. This marks the ninth time in the last 11 years that they've achieved that, and they finished with a final national ranking of 23. Men's tennis finished with a final national ranking of 38, also a very good season. And then finally, in terms of our fundraising, the annual cash gifts from both the auction and the Swamp Fox campaign, this past school year totaled $167,000, which is slightly higher than last year, which totaled $153,000. So there's been a steady increase. And overall, if you include that cash, as well as in-kind gifts, $363,936 were raised by the athletic department this past school year. So outstanding job there. And fall, fall sports report August 11th, just around the corner. One other announcement, upcoming event, and that is freshman move-in. Saturday, August 19th, spots are filling up quickly. You need to go online or email Teresa Ramey as soon as possible to sign up for a shift. And I understand complimentary presidential hot dogs are available that day to all volunteers who participate. Shifts are 8:00 AM to 12 noon, and 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So I know, I know Student Affairs would very much appreciate any of you who can volunteer, and they've made it extra easy with online registration. So, that concludes my report.
Good. Any questions? All right, we'll expect y'all to sign up. All right, that concludes our committee reports. We'll move on to the president's report.
Mr. Chairman, let me start, if I might, this morning, or this afternoon, on a somber note. Over the last few months, the university's lost four of our faculty pioneers, as many of you know. Dr. Tom Ruth passed on, Dr. Lloyd Birch, Dr. Harlan Hawkins, and most recently, the past three weeks, Dr. David Peterson passed. You know, each of these men were critically integral to the development of the curriculum and their disciplines in this, in this university. They, they developed those departments, they went on to become leaders on this faculty over the years. One of the things I was very gratified to see was not just the outpouring of support from the university community at their funerals, but how many trustees showed up at their funerals as well. That's the ultimate mark of respect, and I want to tell the board how proud I am of you coming out to, to offer your condolences to the family at those events. Thank you for passing the 3% tuition increase. You know, we, this, this board, I know, never takes a tuition increase lightly. It's, it's difficult to ask students to pay more, to, to increase tuition. I do want to remind the members of the board that, as, as Chairman Jones pointed out, that this tuition essentially is paying for some costs pushed down to us by the state, essentially increased costs pertaining to employer share of the pension, and increased costs pertaining to the employer's share on health insurance premiums. Absent those two mandates, the tuition wouldn't be as heavy as it is this time, but, but those are costs that have to be dealt with. And I also want to thank you for including in there 1 and 1/2% pay increase to, for, for our faculty and staff. These, as, as all of you saw today at the staff awards luncheon, these are men and women who serve this university well, and, and I'm deeply appreciative that you remember every year, that at the very least, we need to protect their base pay amounts and, and prevent erosion and inflation over periods of time. I think that's very, very important. The master plan, we discussed that today. I know it was discussed in Facilities Committee. Both the master plan and the campus development summary over the last 18 years do a very, very good job of encapsulating essentially the capital facilities' past, present, and future direction of this university. Within the master plan itself, you'll see that, of course, our major priorities, as Mr. Kispert told the Facilities Committee, and as Chairman Stephen Jones conveyed to you, the number one priority going forward with the master plan will be the renovation of that old post office. Hopefully, we'll begin work on that next summer, assuming that a state bond bill is passed in this next legislative session. We believe it's likely it will be passed, and we'll have the fundings to begin that renovation. That renovation will take about a year. So that building would essentially be ready for use as a medical and health education classroom building in the summer of 2019. The second priority is, of course, our Honors Center, home of what we hope will be our Honors Program, our international programs, and the McNair Center. Hopefully, we'll acquire the funding for that facility, the remainder of the funding for that facility over the next two years. We, we're hopeful that that Honors Center will be open no later than fall of 2020, and we can move those programs into that Honors Center. And then the third priority contained in that campus master plan is, of course, that School of Education, School of Business, I probably would want me to say, School of Business, School of Education, building. And, and again, that's dependent again upon a subsequent bond bill that would be robust enough to, to, to provide the $23 million necessary for the funding of that building. I don't expect that to materialize within the next few years, but I think ultimately that we'll be successful in building that building. You know, there was a time when people told us, you'll never be able to build a performing arts center. And there were times when people told us that this university would never be able to build a health sciences center. Well, with a little help from our friends, legislative delegation led by Senator Letherman, Doctors Bruce and Lee Foundation, and the City of Florence, we were able to build those, and I think we'll get there with the School of Business and Education at some point, perhaps with a little more help from our friends. Let me, let me just say a positive word. Faculty and staff have been working diligently towards our SACs accreditation, which will, the review will occur this coming year. Rusty Ward has spearheaded that effort on behalf of the faculty. Dr. Ward has done extraordinarily good job, and we've invited Dr. Ward to the, your August retreat to talk to you about where we sit with the accreditation, and to present each of you copies of the accreditation plan, which we should have pretty much in place at that point in time. We will submit that plan in September, the accreditation review reaffirmation plan, and then we'll receive a site visit from the SACs evaluators in next March. So next year will be that SACs evaluation process. Let me very quickly just address some of the personnel changes that was alluded to in the earlier reports. Becky Flanagan, after five very successful years as the chair of the, of the faculty, is, is stepping down his chair and going on to, to provide the leadership for the Department of English. Becky, would you stand up and let us thank you for your service? Chris Johnson's not here this morning, but Dr. Johnson's stepping down his Chair of English, and Chris will be moving over to assume responsibilities as the Director of the McNair Center. And then, of course, as I gave the board a brief... And then of course, as I gave the board a brief last meeting and, and the executive committee at least, Tucker Mitchell is being promoted to the position of Vice President and will assume the Vice Presidency of Communications. Tucker's done a wonderful job for this university the last few years and this is our way, not only of recognizing the fine job he's done, but it's also our way of recognizing the enhanced role that that Community Communications Office plays in essentially conveying the message of the university to outside constituencies. So we, we congratulate Tucker on that promotion and we'll do a press release a little later this week related to that. Finally, let me just say this, all of you, like me, bask in the, in the delight of that, that staff awards ceremony today. And you, once you set through that, you get, you get a true feel as to how much this university comes together around those kinds of events. The two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-sixty men and women in that room today are truly some of the finest employees in the state of South Carolina and they absolutely love this university and they work diligently on behalf of this university. One other point I want to make to each of you as trustees, they idolize you. They respect you, but more importantly, they trust you as trustees to do the right thing for this university and to do the right thing for them every time you come together around this table. Mr. Chair, I'm delighted to say, in eighteen years, I've never ever seen this board do anything other than the right thing. I thank you for that. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. We appreciate your comments and your leadership and we all certainly value the, the staff and faculty and we know that they appreciate what we do, but we know that they would go to bat, they know that you go to bat for them every time you have an opportunity and, you know, it's obvious that they have a great love and admiration for you and it's well-deserved. And so we, we appreciate you doing that and we're glad to be a part of that today and it's really fun to come and witness that. And hopefully we can continue to do that in the future for our summer board meetings. We'll move on now to, I don't think we have any unfinished business, new business. I'll be completing the President's evaluation in the next few weeks, so if you have anything you'd like to say, good or bad, please pass it on and we'll compile that. We, also, I want to remind you, it's not new business, but I want to remind you about our August retreat. It's going to be August the third here, ten o'clock, the executive committee meets at nine. So it'll be a full day, so, and, and an event that evening at the Sparrow Stadium, so I hope you'll all be able to attend. I have one other item. It's always with mixed emotions that we have to recognize an outgoing board member, but as you know, Mark Bunch had to move on. He relocated to Bennettsville and so he moved outside of the district he was elected and so he resigned and we, he spoke at our last board meeting, but we didn't have a plaque to present him. He's not here today, but I would like to do that on behalf of the board and I'd like to ask Trustee McIntyre if he would present that to him. And the, the plaque is, presented to James Mark Bunch, Member of Board of Trustees, July twenty thirteen, June twenty seventeen, in appreciation for distinguished service and in recognition of his commitment to excellence on behalf of the board, administration, faculty, and students. And we would present that to him and we-
I'll be glad to.
-let him know that we appreciate his service.
I certainly will. Thank you on his behalf.
We don't have a need for an executive session and if there's no other business and no objection, we'll stand adjourned.
Good call.
Thank you.